Having been informed by the town clerk that we have a quorum, I declare the meeting open for business. And I fully expect, by the way, first of all, thank you for being prompt to come to this meeting, and I fully expect that we can finish tonight. I did say that before. We're on Article 38, which you will find on page 70 in your warrant. Article 38 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the reserve fund for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2014, in addition to the appropriation voted by the 2014 annual town meeting under Article 33, and to act on anything related there too. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It is recommended the town appropriate the sum of $713,000. Ah, thank you. And I had the revision. Thank God for colors. Only I don't see my yellow copy. My apologies, in case you didn't hear all that. So you, this, the other night was passed out a yellow revision. And I will need, now read to you what is the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, which is on this yellow page. It is recommended the town appropriate the sum of $396,000 for the reserve fund for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2014, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $396,090 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Henry Carr, Precinct 10. I was just wondering if you could give me, I know I'm only supposed to address one article, but it seems like 38 and 39 are somewhat related. One has a decrease from the original amount. The other has an increase. And is that again like the other night? If you could just explain.
Mr. Hayes, Chairman of the Warrant Committee, you're recognized for addressing the question.
Good evening. Hello. Ted Hayes, Warrant Committee Chair, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. So, Mr. Carr is absolutely right. One article came down by $317,225, and the other article went up by the exact same amount. The reason for this is that we had set aside that amount, $317,225, in this year's reserve fund for the purpose of the eventual demolition of the town-owned building at the Hendry's site. So, this, having set that, those funds aside in, I believe, December for that eventuality, and realizing that that was not coming to pass, we decided that it would be prudent to move that money into next year's reserve fund for the same eventuality. So that's what we did, and I hope it doesn't go any further than that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. I wonder if we can get a report on the status of discussions relating to the Hendry's property.
So, Mr. Mullen, I'm, as your moderator, I'm struggling to see the relationship between that question and this recommendation.
Because I'm, the Warrant Committee Chairman just told us that the reason we're moving this money is because of the demolition of the project.
Fair enough, and I should pay attention a little more. I was looking to the next recommendation. Yes. Katie Collin, Member of the Board of Selectmen, you're recognized for the purpose of addressing the question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think as town meeting members and the viewers know, we've been working on this project for a long time. We have been before the Conservation Commission regarding the demolition for several months. We have had to request a couple of delays for various reasons. The developer has gotten, or is in the process of, the Conservation Commission has voted to approve it, but I don't think the paperwork has actually fully been issued yet for a demolition permit for the private property, the Carrick property at 131 Elliott Street. The town has a continued hearing before the Conservation Commission for Zero Central Avenue tomorrow evening. And we have said at a recent meeting that we've been in some recent discussions that have been very good with the developer, and we're working very hard to hopefully get what we think will be the best result for this location. It's an important site. It's a gateway to the town. It's a business district. We have very few business districts, and we have a small amount of commercial tax revenue. So we'd like to try to preserve all options for commercial space at this property. As I think, as everyone knows, there is a comprehensive permit that's been issued for the developer at 131 Elliott Street, and it's been a complicated process, a lot of different parties involved, including the MBTA and others. So, we understand people's frustration with the progress, but we do think that we are moving this along as best we can. We've had good cooperation and good discussions with the developer, and we are hopeful that we will have a good outcome for this site. And I think that's really all we can say at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Collin.
Can you hear me from here, Mr. Moderator?
I can, but I prefer that you-
Can you hear me from here?
Yes!
James Mullen Jr., Precinct 5. At any time during the discussion in the last, how many years, has there been an opportunity for that property to be demolished for zero by the developer? And if the answer is yes, I say it's too bad, and it's $317,000, too bad for the people. But I'd like to know if at any time the opportunity was there to demolish that building for zero by the developer demolishing the building. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mullen, although well-intentioned, probably wanted to save us some time, and I'm sure everyone in the hall could hear you, but unfortunately, the microphone for people at home couldn't quite pick that up. So the next time, I'm going to paraphrase your question, the next time I'd ask you to come to the mic. So, Mr. Mullen from Precinct 5 has raised the question, is at any time the developer, has there been opportunity to raise that property for zero dollars? Mr. Hurley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Hurley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. There, over the years, have been negotiations with the developer. The problem is, obviously, the developer would have to own Zero Central Ave in order to be able to demolish it any cheaper than the town could. If the town owned the property, then prevailing wages would have to be paid on that portion. It becomes a very complex demolition. There were, and there have been, proposals or negotiations to attempt to bring about a meeting of the minds and a sale of that property to the developer. To date, that has, we have not had any luck. Those negotiations got close at one point in time, but we couldn't quite get there.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? I remind you, it takes majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 39, which also is on your yellow sheet, it's a revised recommendation, but the article itself begins on the bottom of page 70 in your warrant. Article 39 is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the reserve fund for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, and to apply from the overlay reserves such amounts as the town shall determine to meet in whole or in part such appropriation and to act on anything related there too. And again, let's, the recommendation is in your yellow sheet. It is recommended the town appropriate the sum of $597,445 for the reserve fund for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2015, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $200,000 be raised from the tax levy, and the sum of $397,445 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Mr. Hayes, Chairman of the Warrant Committee, you're recognized.
Ted Hayes, Warrant Committee Chair, Precinct 3. So, if anybody is actually doing the math here, they'll realize that there's a gap between the simple addition of $317,000 to the original $200,000 and the end result. That, if you can recall, a week ago on Monday, I opened the meeting and explained that the Warrant Committee was recommending an additional $80,220 for the reserve fund. So if you add $80,220 to the $317, to the original 200 in the article, you will now arrive at the $597, if you are doing the math. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. But then, but just to also reiterate, the recommendation that I read you that is printed on here is in fact accurate, and that is the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 40. To see what some, to see if the town will vote to authorize the use of revolving funds previously established pursuant to votes of town meeting, and to determine, one, the programs and purposes for which each such revolving fund may be expended, two, the departmental receipts which shall be credited to each such revolving fund, and three, the board, department, or officer authorized to expend money from each said such revolving fund, and four, a limit on the total amount which may be expended from each such revolving fund in the fiscal year, which begins in July 1, 2015, and to act on anything related there too. Now, before I read the recommendation, I've been informed that there was a proposed amendment to the recommendation that was brought to the Warrant Committee meeting just before we met, in the hopes that they would adopt it as a friendly amendment. They took a vote and adopted it as a friendly amendment. So we have now, through the good graces of the School Department and Glenn Pavlichek, copies have just been made, and we're going to pass those out. I'll wait till you get it, and then I'll read the recommendation. What's being passed out is just an addition to the recommendation that I'm going to read. And the town clerk is feverishly looking for her copy, as well she should. Glenn, can you give the town clerk? No. Never mind. So, folks, let me explain what's being passed out, how it's going to interject, and I'm going to read it as part of the overall recommendation. It's some verbiage that is being added into the recommendation just after the last part of the verbiage above the table. So I'm going to read the recommendation above the table, add the verbiage that you've just been passed out, and then read the table amounts, and continue on with the full recommendation. Having happened so quick to our meeting, we did not have time to make the adjustment to what was being projected also. I see we're on the homestretch here. Thank you to our Chairman of our Planning Board and School Committee and other school committee members and school departments for passing that out. Thank you. As I said, I'm going to add the verbiage in and just read it as full part of the entire recommendation. We're on page 71 of your warrant. It is recommend the town continue the revolving funds created under Chapter 44, Section 53E and One Half of the Massachusetts General Laws, and established by votes of the annual town meeting, as indicated in the tabulation below, and that at the end of the fiscal year, those boards and commissions with the revolving funds indicated below shall make a full report, full and complete report, with detail of the total revolving fund revenue collected and funds expended to the Warrant Committee. For annual town meeting, March 1994, Article 37, the Board of Park Commissioners, it is recommended a limit of $75,000. From the May 1996, Article 31, Board of Library Trustees, it is recommended a limit of $85,000. From the May 2001, Article 29, it is recommend, for the Board of Selectmen, it is recommended a limit of $25,000. For the May 2004, Article 28, for the Board of Health, it is recommended a limit of $20,000. For the May 2008, Article 30, for the Board of Library Trustees, it is recommended a limit of $25,000. For the May 2009, Article 40, for the Cemetery Department, it is recommended a limit of $60,000. For the May 2011, Article 32, for the Conservation Commission, it is recommended a limit of $15,000. And for the January 2012, Special Town Meeting, Article 5, for the Board of Selectmen, it is recommended a limit of $6,000. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Morash, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Member, Steve Morash, Precinct 2. The other night, we had a discussion with the Parks Department that-
Mr. Morash, if you could just get a little closer to that microphone.
A comment was made that some of us looked at about total budget for the Parks Department. Someone said that, I believe it was the Chair of the Warrant Committee, that they have a revolving fund that exceeds the budget they get from town meeting. So I started looking at some things. It turns out that we really have no idea what these revolving funds do. We trust the boards and commissions, and I'm not by any means saying that anything untoward is going on, but I think it's good for us to know, as we expend town funds, just where that accounting is in full transparency. And that's what this motion does, this amendment. It allows us to see how much money people are taking in on fees and what they're spending it on. So that's the purpose of this. I think it's a great start at transparency and accountability. I ask you to vote yes for this amendment and this article. However, I'm troubled by that other $400,000 in the other Parks Department revolving fund. Just troubled by it that we don't really know what's going on with that. There's almost 200, I believe, $200,000-plus in miscellaneous expenses. And I think this town meeting should know what that's about. So I would hope that if this article does pass with this amendment, that the Parks Department would understand what we're trying to see here for transparency, and would voluntarily do the same type, type of, as I said here, full and complete report with detail to the Warrant Committee Chair, and let the Warrant Committee see where our town expenses and budgets are. Thank you very much for your consideration on this, and I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Morash. Mr. Hayes, you're recognized.
Well, Ted Hayes, Chairman of the Warrant Committee, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. Thank you, Mr. Morash, for, for your suggestion and your recommendation. It is true that the sum total of the revolving funds withdrawal limits in Article 40 is $371,000. The, there, there is a, another revolving fund that Mr. Morash spoke of that is outside this article, and is authorized through the Parks Department annual appropriation article, and authorized by the town, towns' general bylaws instead of Massachusetts law. And that's a fine thing. It's, it's, it is large. It's as big as the general fund for, budget for the Parks Department, and it will be helpful to the Warrant Committee to have more detail on that fund, as well as all the other revolving funds. So, I recommend a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Does anyone else wish to be recognized for this motion? Again, it takes majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 41, which you'll find on page 72 of your warrant. To see if the town will vote to transfer a care, custody, management, and control from the Board of Selectmen for municipal dump purposes to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes of the former landfill access road located adjacent to the land shown on the Town of Milton assessor's maps, Section I, Block 38D, as lots 10A, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and to act on anything related there too. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended the town vote to transfer a care, custody, management, and control of the Board of, from the Board of Selectmen for municipal dump purposes to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes of the former landfill access road located adjacent to the land shown on the Town of Milton's assessor's maps, Section I, Block 38D, as lots 10A, 6, 7, 8, and 9. This will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee, say aye. Opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 42, which you will find on page 73 of your warrant. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file a petition with the General Court to enact it. Actually, I'm going to go right directly to the recommendation, because it's basically a rehash. So we're going, this is submitted by the Town Government Study Committee, and it is recommended the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file a petition with the General Court to enact legislation which would provide that in circumstances where quorum of a public body is a simple majority of the members of that public body, the quorum shall be a simple majority of the members appointed to that public body, rather than a simple majority of the number of members of that public body as authorized. In this context, a public body's municipal member, board, commission, committee, or subcommittee within the executive or legislative branch of the Town of Milton, however created, appointed, or otherwise constituted, established to serve a public purpose but shall not include a multiple, multiple-member board, commission, committee, or subcommittee whose members are elected by registered voters of the town, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. And recognize Rick Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee. The history of this article is that the Department of Revenue had a series of recommendations that we've already discussed, many of them earlier in this town meeting. But one of the recommendations was to reduce the size of the Warrant Committee to seven or nine members. Our committee reviewed that, got feedback from the Chairman of the Warrant Committee, received feedback from the moderator, and after debate and consideration in our committee, we were opposed to that recommendation. We don't believe the Department of Revenue really understands the town with regard to this issue. And as we looked at the issue, we've, and talked to the, as I said, to the moderator and the Chairman of the Warrant Committee, we believe there are enough volunteers that are willing to serve in this town, and that the issue, if any, is that there's a matter of timing. We believe that it's important for committees to function. It's important for committees to get up to speed and get up to operate. But we believe that in some cases, it's necessary to define a quorum as the number based upon those appointed at that particular time. So, for example, if you look at the Warrant Committee today, under the current rules, eight out of 15 is considered a quorum. Under the new rules, for example, it would still be eight out of 15. However, if the membership dropped to 14 under the old rules, and under the new rules, it would still be eight. The distinction comes in when it drops down to 13, for example. Under the current rules, you would need eight out of 13. Under the proposed article here, it would become seven, seven out of 13, because that's the number that are appointed at that particular time, due to the fact there might be two vacancies. So the committee felt that in the interest of the public, the public interest, that it's best served for operating as a committee to be efficient in having the business conducted and not be held up some case, for example, if members are not able to make a meeting or are late, and that as long as you received seven, or as long as seven out of 13 members were attending in that example, that would consider to be a quorum under this proposed article, versus, for example, getting, again, eight under the current rules. This would affect only appointed committees in the town. It does not affect any elected boards. So again, it deals with appointed committees, and the hope is that this would provide relief in cases where there were vacancies that have occurred, or committees are being formed and they're not fully, you know, they haven't received a full complement yet. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Christensen, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 7. I'm standing to voice my opposition to this article and ask you, my fellow town meeting members, to join me. If the problem is filling vacancies, then we need to fill vacancies. This article is asking us to allow quorums to be set for town committees based on the number of appointed seats, not the number of seats. The term I use for this is a floating quorum, where the quorum is no longer fixed, but floats depending on the number of vacancies. Good policy decisions try to avoid unintended consequences. This bylaw change has an obvious, potentially negative, unintended consequence. This change will remove the incentive for appointing authorities to quickly reach out to the community volunteers to fill vacancies on committees. The Warrant and Government Study Committee's comment on the article recognizes that there's no shortage of volunteers for town committees. The volunteer form actually warns that many talented residents offer their services and that available appointments are few. It encourages us not to be disappointed if we're not chosen. So why do we need this change? The motivation for a floating quorum is not that there is a shortage of qualified volunteers. Instead, it is presented to us for our vote because committee progress is stalled when vacancies occurred. So why not work on the actual problem? Fill vacancies more quickly when they occur. Let's support our appointing authorities by volunteering for town committees, helping them find qualified volunteers, by attending meetings when we are appointed, and by resigning when one can no longer serve. Good policy avoids unintended consequences. This article is not good policy. Please vote no to keep the incentive that encourages appointing authorities to fill vacancies quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christian. Folks, we're going to take a very brief, two- to three-minute recess. I'd ask you to stay in your, your seats and not move, and I'll be right back to conduct the, to reconduct the meeting.
Sophomore team actually won forty-two to nothing following. And tonight, our freshmen and sophomores played Belmont, whose varsity team is the number-one rated team in the state as a Division One school, and we beat them twenty-four to twenty-two. So Wednesday, the day after tomorrow, is senior night. It's our last official home game. But we will host a playoff game next Tuesday at six o'clock. We will play the second-place team in the North Division, and the winner will go on to the state championship game the following Saturday in Worcester. So I invite all of you out for five o'clock on Wednesday to play the game against Situate and next Tuesday at six for the game against the to-be-determined opponent in a first playoff game next week. Thank you. And I would just conclude by saying that we are undefeated.
All right.
Both teams.
Based on some of the comments of the previous speaker, I feel it's important for Town Meeting Members that I, as an ex officio Town Meeting Member, have the opportunity to weigh in for the discussion of this motion. Consequently, I'm no longer appropriate to continue moderating this motion. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint our Town Council as an interim moderator for the deliberation of this motion. That's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, no. Town Council, you are now the moderator. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator? Well, which one's the moderator? I have a point of order.
Point of order is recognized.
Are you a resident of the Town of Milton? Because generally, it's the Town Clerk who has always stood in for the Town Moderator. I find this a little unusual, and I'd like a clarification, although you are Town Council, so I guess when he talked to you, you appointed yourself.
To the Speaker's point of order, I am not a resident of the Town of Milton. Recognize the Speaker in the front, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brian Walsh. Usually, you're Town Moderator, and I'm also ex officio Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. Mr. Moderator, it has been the occasion in the past, even during my interim as moderator and during my time as Town Meeting Member, to witness, in fact, Town Council be voted as an interim moderator and moderate the proceedings. So, and I believe it might be chapter thirty-nine of our bylaws. Not exactly sure. But anyway, so, Mr. Moderator, I believe that regardless of the fact that you are not a resident of the Town of Milton, as an interim Town Moderator, as our Town Council, our representative Town Council, you can act in that capacity. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator. Or, sir, Mr. Moderator. That's correct. This is the Speaker's point.
And I'll, thank you. I'll defer because I just was getting up to address the question.
As Speaker, please identify yourself. Yes, you in the jacket.
Scott Matthews, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. I was just hoping to get a little clarification on here. I understand the motion to try to keep things moving. I also understand Ms. Christensen's concern. I was wondering if it was considered to have a time limit between when there was vacancies and when a vacancy can be filled before you have to fill people in? Or if there's some distinguished, some clarification on what a vacancy constitutes, whether it's a person ejected from the board or they're just absent, or if they have left for good? My concern is that, I understand with a larger board like the Warrant Committee, this might be a little bit more appropriate, but if you have a smaller committee where you're trying to get like a cross-section of different experiences to try to get more input, once you start allowing a reduced amount of people to be able to make decisions, that you're probably losing some of that diversity in terms of thought. So if we can have some clarification, I appreciate that.
Rick Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. And in answer to those questions, as we looked at this, we did not consider a time limit. We felt that there is not a reluctance on the part of any of the boards or the appointing authorities to appoint persons. The vacancies that we're considering are vacancies where there is not a person appointed or existing in any capacity on the committee. So it's not an absence. It's not someone who hasn't shown up or who is sick. It is simply a case where there is not a name associated with the entire, you know, with a position on the committee. So again, our committee did discuss last Thursday evening before the town meeting the question of limitation, and our committee was opposed to a limitation. Again, we never thought that there would be any thought that people would not get appointed to the committee. We believe, again, that simply this is in the public interest for the committee to work. And I'll give you an example. The Warrant Committee sometimes meets three times a week. They do a great job. They have a lot of people. They put a lot of hours in. But if you do, or if you're down a couple of positions, it's difficult to obviously expect people to show up three nights a week and spend the hours they do or to be there, for example, at precisely the moment the meeting starts. So again, the thought process was simply innocent enough to say, we just want government to work better and more efficiently. And this is in the public interest to help both the committee members get their work done and help the public see that their work gets done. I hope that answers your question.
Good. Recognize the Speaker in the front.
Frank Giuliano, Precinct Three. Is there criteria that we have to decide if someone gets on the committee or is it just a volunteer basis of a citizen in the town? Is there something that excludes people from becoming a committee member voluntarily?
Recognize Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Brian Walsh, ex officio Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. And I would like to address the gentleman's question, but I'd also like to share some more overview remarks. There is criteria, and I will get to that. First, I want to just discuss a little bit that it troubles me when it seems to here that the Warrant Committee is sort of under scrutiny for, gee, are they attending every meeting and do they have an issue with the quorum? So I'd like to tell you with the most confidence I have that the Warrant Committee is the hottest working committee in this town. The Warrant Committee is typically made up of people of tremendous character who, in fact, if you look around this room just tonight, and this is not atypical, this is typical, there are two members of our Board of Selectmen that formerly served on a Warrant Committee that I appointed, including the Chairman. The Chairman of our current planning board is a former member of a Warrant Committee that I appointed. The Chairman of the School Committee and another member of the school, actually, the immediate past Chairman, are members of a Warrant Committee that I appointed. The Warrant Committee has fifteen members, and as Mr. Neely suggested, they work a tremendous amount of meetings. And in some cases, not all of them can make every meeting. Does that, is that a problem for the town? No, there are fifteen members. They carry on. So if they miss a meeting on a particular night, they certainly catch up. We are talking about dozens of meetings, folks. And frankly, whether this motion passes or doesn't pass, the Warrant Committee will go on and continue to serve you extremely well. The Warrant Committee, however, is a lot like any other group. Things happen during the course of a year. And I will tell you, just, I'll just take the last two years. Members have had to step down because of concerns with taking care of family members. Members have had to step down because they moved out of town. Pretty good reason to step down for the Warrant Committee. Members have had to step down because of their own health. And one of the judgments your moderator has made, and I know past moderators have made because I've had this discussion with them, is that if it happens real late in a cycle, if we lose a member or two in February or March, it makes no sense to fill a member and expect the rest of the Warrant Committee to now, at a time where they're incredibly busy, to invest a lot of time to bring a new member up to speed. And in fact, if you're a department in this town, you might be a little concerned, in fact, if you're a Town Meeting Member, you might be a little concerned as to whether or not a brand-new member who's trying to rush to get up to speed should possibly be voting and making recommendations to you along with the rest of the committee. So there are times, the question about, should there be a timely requirement to replace that member? I don't think that would be appropriate, and I don't think it would be fair. And again, I would remind you, look, they sit at the front of the room for every town meeting. You have heard them make their remarks and recommendations. As I look out in the hall, I see many Town Meeting Members who are former Warrant Committee Members. And in fact, as a result of their experience and their education and their commitment learned from the Warrant Committee, they've gone on to serve this town well. To have a deadline requirement, for example, as is raised as a question, to fill the meeting, fill the membership without judgment would be a mistake. To the Speaker's question about, is there criteria? There is not a long written set of rules, but I will tell you the criteria that I have applied. And it's criteria I can tell you that Mr. Ward applied. And I didn't have that many conversations with the prior moderator, Mr. Winchester, but I am sure that it's what he would apply. You look for balance. You look for people. It's going to, the Warrant Committee among, most of their recommendations have to do with budget articles. And so I always look to try to have a balance of at least five members on there that have a strong background in finance, whether it's an MBA or a finance degree or an active, their employment, their full-time job. I look to make sure we have at least a strong level base of finance. But they also make other recommendations to you, and so you want other balance. You want balance of men and women. You want the Warrant Committee to look like the town. There may be single parents. There may be working parents. There may be people who are not parents. And you also like to look for geographic disparity. You like to make sure that there are people from East Milton, in the middle of the town, in West Milton, to the best of your ability, that are appointed. You also want to have some sort of age distribution. People that are living on fixed income. When I can get somebody living on a fixed income or a retiree to work on the Warrant Committee, that's a wonderful thing. So you look for a general balance. It's hard to say in a hard, fast set of rules. But I'll tell you what I don't look for in the criteria that I would find unacceptable for a member of the Warrant Committee. I try to make sure that there isn't somebody that has an issue, that they are battling some department or some group within the town, and they're going to use the Warrant Committee as an opportunity to get involved in that as a bully pulpit. That happens, folks. I'll have people that apply that have an issue. Now, let me tell you, they may be perfectly fine and can have their issue and work on their issue outside of the Warrant Committee, and this is a democracy, and I think that's fantastic. But the Warrant Committee also should have the respect of the town departments just at a level that they're being treated fairly. And if we start appointing people who want to use the Warrant Committee as a bully pulpit for any reason, then I will tell you, I will not appoint them. Now, again, whether this motion carries or doesn't carries, that will be this moderator's position for the time I am the moderator, and I can almost assure you that will be any moderator's position. So what is this really all about? It's about to make the work of the Warrant Committee a little bit easier, to not have to sit around for an extra half an hour some evening when it's the third meeting in a week so they can get that quorum and work on your business. And they're very careful to not conduct business until they have a quorum. So I would urge your support, and I hope you would realize that, in fact, great effort goes into the appointments in the Warrant Committee. And the end result, I think, speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Seeing no further debate. Oh, yes, Speaker in front.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like, once again, point of order, the exact chapter and verse because the, just what just happened there is one of the reasons I strongly feel that in the past, our Town Council always was a resident of the town. I don't believe we've ever had a town meeting conducted by someone who's not a resident. So what was the chapter and verse addressing my point of order that?
Chapter thirty-nine. If you, with your indulgence, I'm just going to look it up on my phone. Back in order. To the point of order, to the previous Speaker's point of order, chapter thirty-nine, section fourteen of the Massachusetts General Laws provides, in part, "If a vacancy in the said office," and I'm adding in the words of the moderator, "occurs during any term, it may be filled by the voters of the town or district. If a moderator selected is absent, a temporary moderator may be elected." And I'm reading from the third paragraph of chapter thirty-nine, section fourteen. Also, so that's where the statute provides for the election of a temporary moderator. Bear with me one more moment, and I do apologize.
Mr. Moderator, would it be appropriate to tell a story?
Sure, as long as it's within the scope of the article.
I'm James Mullin, Jr. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Five. This is my forty-second year. This is my 42nd year here at Town Meeting. I very much hesitate to get into this, but I think you need to hear a story. And I don't want to tell it because it's embarrassing to me. And probably some people wish I wouldn't do it, but I'm about to. At the age of 21, I was elected to the school committee. I was re-elected twice. So I was elected to three terms on the school committee. I was elected 16 times as the town clerk in the Town of Milton. I was elected nine times to the Board of Selectmen. I've served as a town meeting member in Precinct Five and in Precinct One. And in 2012, when I stepped down from my post, I was a little concerned about withdrawal. So after 40 years, I was a little concerned with withdrawal. I had been involved in town government my whole adult life, and here I am at 64, and I'm still involved. And I volunteered. I volunteered my 40 years of service to the town and to the moderator. And my volunteer was accepted, and I was appointed. And the day that the meeting was going to be held, I was called and told I was no longer welcomed, I was no longer appointed, my appointment was withdrawn because certain people didn't like the idea that the likes of me could be appointed to a committee in the Town of Milton. I've told you of my record, townspeople of the Town of Milton have been very, very good to me, and I'm very thankful. And even to date, last week in the election, I was sent back here from the voters at Precinct Five, and I was very thankful and very appreciative of the vote I received. But I just thought I'd like to share that story with you. I kind of hate to because it's embarrassing to me to think that 40 years of service would be looked at by a few people and rejected, and they know who they are. So I just thought it was interesting that there are people in town willing to serve on boards and willing to give of their time. The requirement to serve on boards is that you're a registered voter in the Town of Milton, and I've been a registered voter since the age of 20, when I was eligible. The very first moment I was eligible to be a registered voter, I became one. So that's my story, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, for allowing me to tell it.
As to the point of order, I did want, and I do appreciate the indulgence of the body, I did want, there was an additional section of that statute that I did want to also locate as to the prior speaker's comment about the town clerk. Chapter 39, Section 14 proceeds to state, as to the role of the town clerk, because that was mentioned previously, at every town or district meeting, until a moderator or temporary moderator is elected, the clerk of the town or district shall provide. In this case, seeing that the body had voted a motion to elect a temporary moderator, and there's no restriction on residency for the office of the temporary moderator, that's what's happened tonight just for this purposes of just this Article 42. Is there any further debate on the main motion of Article 42? Yes.
Ginny Donahue-King, Precinct Three. I have the utmost respect for all of the people that are on the warrant committee and have been on the warrant committee. It is not something that I think that I could do because I know that it is a huge commitment of time. However, this isn't just written for the warrant committee. And so I would like to address, I'd like to address my comments, not to the warrant committee, but, well, not to the warrant committee, not about the warrant committee, but more about the other committees. The amount of time that you have to put into another committee is not nearly what it is on the warrant committee. Although, if you're on the Board of Appeals doing a 40B right now, I'd say I'm right there with you. But, anyway, what I would like to focus on is perhaps getting, the warrant committee has to deal with kind of a set year, like a school year. And I understand that you, you know, you can't do algebra, you can't do calculus without doing the algebra first, and you can't base your decisions later in the year on what you didn't, you weren't able to learn in the first part of the year. So I can kind of look at that, and I wonder if this article should be addressed only for the warrant committee. But if it isn't addressed only for the warrant committee, I think we need to instead look at just getting better volunteers involved. The other night, the volunteer form was there, and I've been a town meeting member for 18 years, and that's only the second time I've seen the volunteer form. And we're just a small subset of all of the people in town that have such great talents and qualifications to be on a whole host of different committees in this town. So I would like to focus that on, instead of limiting the number of people that we can have, let's try to get more people in there. If there are members that don't go to committee meetings that meet on a monthly basis, that's not so good. If you do it once, okay, you're sick. If you do it habitually, step down. Let's get somebody else in there. There are people out there that will do it. We just need to find a better way of perhaps getting people into that conduit that helps us out with all of these town committees. So I am for this article. However, I would make a motion for an amendment that this only be for the warrant committee and not for all of the other appointed committees, since that's what we seem to be talking about.
Yes, if we can have the motion in writing. that would be replaced with the words "the warrant committee"? Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. On the amendment to substitute the words "public body" with the words "the warrant committee," any discussion? Yes, as to just the amendment?
I completely understand. I've been a town meeting member for 33 years, Mr. Moderator, and my question for you is I'd like to point out that I actually was seated up front prior to about the previous six members speaking, and I sat patiently by. So I'm not being allowed to address the important issue that I want to address, but I will keep it, I will keep it to the amendment, Mr. Moderator. And the question is, is it within the scope of the article since some other committees or commissions or boards may have not shown up to request that it not be limited, that they be taken out of this? So by just restricting it to the warrant committee, other boards or commissions didn't receive any notification that they may not have this ability?
On the issue of whether or not it's within the scope, the warrant article itself was to deal with the topic of public bodies and the definition of a quorum for a public body. This is only dealing with one type of board within the definition of a public body. It's my view that this is within the scope, that the public was notified, the representative members of town meeting were notified, that potentially could be all public bodies, or maybe less than all public bodies within the Town of Milton.
Mr. Moderator, I believe the language actually states, and if you'd just give me a second, shall, where was it? A quorum of a public body. Nowhere in the recommendation does it only specify the warrant committee. It goes on to discuss multiple-member board, commission, committed, or subcommittee. So the warrant committee isn't spelled out there.
It's my view that this is within the scope, that the warrant committee is a type of public body, so that is within the scope. Any further debate on the amendment before? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I was going to address my point.
Okay. Do you have further debate?
Yes. I am opposed to the amendment, number one, because I do believe it's out of scope, but number two, in particular, because I represent one of those boards and commissions. I'm sorry, Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine. As a former select person who, you know, worked to make sure that residents of the Town of Milton could volunteer for different boards and committees, I was disheartened to hear one of the previous speakers, who has given so much to our town, have to stand up, and in his own words, you know, feel somewhat humiliated by that discussion. And, but the reason I had wanted to speak prior to the amendment, but it does address the amendment, because, I'm voting against the amendment because it specifically removes the ability to ask the question that I have. And I am also the co-chair of the Commission on Disability, reluctant co-chair. I have an additional question. Is the language, and I guess, I don't know if this is within the scope, so I guess you can rule on this, if a commission only had six members, the warrant committee, though, has 15, would, if there were three of the six, three of five, because there was one vacancy, would that have been the correct math in the system? And with the warrant committee, will it simply be a simple, so if only five people show up? I guess it is a similar question. If only five people out of 15 showed up on the warrant committee, would it only be, what's the math again?
Well, I think that's the first question. That seems to go to the main motion as to the public bodies itself. The second question deals specifically with the warrant committee, so I will entertain that second question. I view that within the scope of this amendment. Is there anyone who can speak to the speaker's second question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and you'd like me to focus on the second question, which was the math?
The second, if the speaker can repeat the question for the benefit of the speaker.
Yes, the math, since we're now narrowed down to the warrant committee.
All right, so how many vacancies in your example are there?
Say there were five vacancies, so there were only 10 members.
In that case, there would be, six would be needed out of 10 for a quorum.
So it only depends on vacancies, Mr. Moderator.
Is that correct?
Only what? I didn't hear that last thing?
So it only depends on vacancies?
As to the number of the vacant or unfilled positions? That's correct.
So six out of 10 in that example. If you had five unappointed, non-appointed out of the 15, there were 10 appointed members, they would need six out of 10.
So then I rise in opposition, and I'm opposed to reducing it to just the warrant committee because for several years now, the Commission on Disability has not been able to operate due to the fact that we were supposed to have six appointments, and we only had two, one due to a passing and one due to someone moving out of town. You'll notice in your warrant, there isn't even a report because the commission really hadn't been acting, and we had accepted the bylaw to have this type of commission. So I strongly feel that we should not limit it. Just last Friday, we finally pulled together an important meeting. We got in the Eustace Estate, and we could not vote. If this law had been approved, we would have been able to vote based on who was in attendance. And I have to tell you, originally, when I saw this, I was opposed to it. So if it wasn't for Friday's meeting, I guess I probably still would be opposed to it. And that's why I feel that the amendment to just, and of course, I always respect Attorney Ginny King's comments, but it's very difficult for a commission where the majority of people are disabled, you know, to get, have the ability to go to those meetings. And I'm hoping maybe in the future we can expand the size in order to get more people. But I also believe that having the passage of the strong town administrative bylaw might assist in filling these vacancies so that even if we pass this with just the warrant committee, I mean, for all versus just the warrant committee, I think the town's going to be able to function a lot better. And I would respectfully request a no vote on the amendment.
Yes, speaker in front.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. The Town Government Study Committee is unanimously opposed to the amendment. Thank you.
Yes, gentleman in front with Polo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry. One former warrant committee chair at a time.
Euan Innes, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, former chair of this august body. I rise in opposition to the amendment. Chapter Three, Section 2A of the town bylaws provides that the warrant committee shall fill all appointments to their body subsequent to them being appointed. So the warrant committee, under the bylaws, has that ability today to fill appointments. Now, having been in the situation where we had vacancies on the warrant committee, I've also been in the position where we did not fill appointments. Because when you're, when it comes around to being March, there is no way, short of bringing in somebody who has formerly served, possibly a chair, to sit on the body for a month, six weeks, eight weeks, to go through that. There makes no sense.